Jack, are you ready? We're good. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I find allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Flair, and Barney. In addition, township manager Don Genuso, Jack King, Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukavinski, Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf, Director of Public Works, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Before we start tonight, I want to announce that we held an executive session at the end of our meeting last month on January 3rd, 2023, to discuss personnel matters. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Not everybody at once. Okay. Before we get into the announcements, I want to take a quick second to thank Range Resources. Did you want to... Oh, I'm sorry. Let me finish what I was gonna say. Come up, come up, come up. And you can just hang with me. I'll be really brief. I want to take a second to thank Range Resources for their donation of $100,000. We had asked for some work to be done on North DePauli Road and their cooperation because their... Well, had the Augustine pad sits off of that. I met with Laurel Zimba last Thursday or last Tuesday. I forget. One day last week. And they donated $100,000 towards the repair of that road, which was greatly appreciated and will help us move that project forward. So, we appreciate that. Go ahead. Sorry about that. I didn't see you. Uh, that one right there.
I just have a general thought.
Or maybe not.
Yep. I just have a general question and a comment.
Sure.
Elevated properties are gonna be putting a cell tower up on County Line Road again, or they applied for it in South Fayette.
Okay.
So, my question is... Oh, go ahead.
Hold on. That's not an agenda item. So, I'm gonna just ask you to hold that question till the end and then please... But please come back and ask that because we do have an answer to your question.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. It's Cindy Mizinski, 543 Morganza Road, Danansburg. I'm just wondering, since they're gonna... You're going to consider the Cool Valley Development Project since there's been no progress or communication with us as landowners regards to this project. So, I'm wondering why there would be a public hearing since nothing has happened.
So, the developer of that project represented to the township that they are ready to move forward with the illustrative site plan. They have not told us one way or the other and we... I don't say we owe it to them, but we told them a real... Or that they could come back before us. I would encourage you to come to that meeting and testify.
I will be here.
Good to know. Thank you. Anybody else before we move on? Okay. The Cecil Township Historical Society will hold... Will not hold a monthly meeting in the month of February. And don't forget, there's a Valentine's Dance on Saturday, February 11th, from 6:00 to 11:00 at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Company Number Three. Also, there's Family Bingo, Sunday, February 19th, 2023, also at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Company, and the doors open at 11:00. Don't forget Pavilion Rentals, I know that's always a hot thing, starts March 3rd for township residents and for non-residents the 2nd Friday of March, which is March 10th at 8:00 a.m. Moving on to discussion items.
So, there's three items on the discussion item. Joe's here going to discuss the 2023 road program. I believe that he sent the board off.
Can you guys hear? I don't... Yeah, I don't think that microphone's working. Sorry.
So, we've put together a plan for the 2023 road program. The board's been presented with a estimate of cost, opinion of cost, and we're just here to go over the roads and point out to the board what's planned tonight and hopefully get your authorization to move it to bid.
Thank you, Dan. We met with the Director of Public Works, Bill Bodorf, and we went over the list last week with Don and Frank Agizio. And this was the final draft, final memo that I issued for the issues road program. The first road that we have on the list is Fellowship Drive from Morganza Road back to the cul-de-sac. It'll be our typical millinery surface, mill three inches off the road, place two inches of binder and an inch and a half of wearing surface. And we've got a little bit of... I think we've got a couple inlets down there towards the end, close to the cul-de-sac to do some repair work on and rebuild those. The next road is Shafoni Road from 158 Shafoni to Muse Bishop Road. Have it there on the screen. Again, same typical cross-section, mill three inches off the road, place two inches of binder, inch and a half of wearing surface, and do some drainage work, including some under drains to take care of some water problems. The next road is Glassville Road from Miller's Road, run road up to Coomer Road. Again, three-inch mill, two inches of binder, inch and a half of wearing surface. Next one is Lexington Drive from Valleyview Drive to Old Farm. This is over in the Georgetown Estates development. We haven't done much in Georgetown Estates probably in recent times. I mean, some of these roads in Georgetown Estates are approaching 30 years old and nothing's been done with them. So, we have this road, Lexington from Valleyview to Old Farm. Again, three-inch mill, two inches of binder, inch and a half of wearing surface. And then also with that, we're gonna do... We wanna do Yorktown Road from Valleyview Drive to Old Farm Road up there and start picking away at some of the roads in Georgetown Estates. The next grouping of roads that we're looking to do is Williams Street from Ridgewood Drive to the cul-de-sac and then Ridgewood Drive from Cowdon Road on both ends. We... When we did Ridgewood Drive last year, the year before, we did a little bit of the intersections a little bit wider than what's shown on there, but we're gonna pick up at those limits and take it out to the intersecting streets. The last road for millinery surface is Park Drive from Mayville Road to the Terminus. This takes you back to Black Box from Mayville Road. And again, we're gonna mill off three inches and put two inches of binder and inch and a half of wearing surface. We're going to increase the easels on that to the .3 to 3 million since you have a lot of truck traffic. So, it'll wear better than a normal residential street. That's our contract A with our Pendot Liquid Fuels. And then the last road, which will be in the contract B, would be the single seal coat with the fog seal on Shafoni Road from Glassville Road for a distance about 4,340 lineal feet. So, with that, the estimated cost for contract A is $795,017.50. And then contract B, which is the seal coat, would be $27,111.70. Both contracts total at one... Or 822,129.20. So, I think we've got a nice selection of roads here for this year's road program. So, any questions?
Any questions by the board? Thank you, Joe.
The Cross Streets and the Flair Plan.
Yeah, Mark will tell you. They've got their patch and they're able to crumble.
Ron, turn your microphone.
Did you hear about the Cross Streets and the Flair Plan?
Yeah, there's still remaining up there in the Flair Plan. We've been, the past couple of years, have dedicated our capital funding to the bridge reconstruction program down there at Premore over here, Ridge of Bridge. Let's take them in as far as our probably reconstruction effort. We're getting back to the construction. We're getting up the program. We still have... We have to try to keep roads alive. We intended to get to it. These roads fucked up in my words because of the curative condition. We have those on our way though.
The next discussion item is the Coomer Road intersection with Muse Bishop Road. If you're aware of this complex intersection, this is Muse Bishop, this is Burnside right here, and this is Coomer Road. There was an approach to enter the road in this direction, which is no longer in use because it's... The area has slid away in this turn and this part of the road is in a very bad condition. We presented back in 2020 to the board some possible realignments with the intersection to allow for left-hand turns here as opposed to people being able to take... Leave the road in this direction and head in this direction towards... Really towards Cecil. This direction takes you towards Muse. So, the idea would be able... This is... Two-way traffic would be able to come up here and be able to make a left turn out of here. The plans that we put back together will give you a little bit more of a... An idea. So, the idea was to actually come up and improve. Right now, this is a very sharp left-hand turn. The idea would be to put a culvert in here, rebuild the entire road up to this, in this direction, to create a more level area to get out of here and be able to make a left-hand turn. This would now align better with Burnside as it's been improved here. So, as we were out with Public Works looking at the roads, the discussion was that we should start planning this a little bit further, at least get some... Get the alignment squared away based upon some good survey information and do the necessary environmental work to make sure we can put this culvert in and at least get this started and have it ready and be in position possibly for next year to make this improvement. So, I believe it's on the agenda to consider authorizing us just to proceed with some survey work and some preliminary investigation to further this project along.
Dan, you're saying this wouldn't get done until next year? Is that what I heard you say?
I think that's the intent, yes.
That's the... That's the idea. There's some... There's some property over there with Josie that I've talked to him about. He might be willing to realign the bottom of that road so we can take the sharp bend out of there at the bottom of the hill. He's agreeable to meet with us and work with us and maybe straighten that bottom out a little bit also. So, I think it's better that you plan ahead and do it correctly and try to rush this through and not really get an overall safety improvement, so.
Yeah.
And I just want to speak real quick on the other side of that road. That was always... That vertical rise always presented an impact hazard. So, I'm happy to see us working on this project. It's an overall safety improvement, intersection improvement project, as far as I'm concerned. I'm surprised nobody was ever killed or seriously injured on the other side of the road that actually slid off the hillside. So, but right now, we have some planning to do with the property owner, see what he's agreeable to, and then we'll move forward with that. But we want to get some survey information done first, so.
Yep.
Please.
It's gonna take time to acquire the permits too. It'll take probably a year.
Right.
So, we gotta get it started now.
Yep. As long as we're moving forward now, I think that's...
Yeah. The other thing too, the existing pipe culvert that's in the creek, there may be an opportunity to reutilize that pipe and move it upstream. And that's... That would be part of the realignment that would take place. Would be the repositioning of the existing culvert upstream. In order to do that, we have to get a permit in place from the DEP, so.
Makes sense. Thanks, Bill.
And the other consideration tonight is to further evaluate the Walnut Street culvert. Forgive those of you not familiar with Muse. This is an aerial photograph of Muse. This is Walnut Street where it intersects with Muse Bishop Road. The idea is this culvert, there's a stream that comes down along this direction, eventually gets all the way through town. But it's really just a crossing underneath Walnut Street at this point. The important part of this is, is if that stream connection collapses, the only way to get into these residents up here is up along Elm Street and the back locust and all the way around. So, right now, there's two ways in and out. There's a loop here to get out of this area. So, the idea would be to get in and I'll just give you an idea of the culvert itself. Here's a couple pictures of it. This is Walnut Street here. This is the culvert. This is the upstream end of it. It's corrugated metal. We're not sure if it's an arch or a round pipe. It might just be filled up. But we're... We just need to look at some options to repair the pipe and/or replace it. So, we're just gonna need to get in and do a more detailed inspection. And again, if there's a permit required for this one, get this at least in the planning stages for consideration next year. We looked at it a couple of years ago and it was having some issues then. This is your 2020 photos, so we're three years ahead now. And we would advise at least getting this, at least in the pipeline, to be repaired and/or replaced. And that's it for the discussion items. If there's any questions.
Any questions? Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Jeff. Moving on to resolutions. 29, 2023, consider application for payment number three and final for the work completed to date for the Hon Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $11,737.50 by Thornberry.
Yeah, this is a final application. They've provided all the information that's available to close the project out. They've provided the maintenance bond and all the other pertinent information. So, it's our recommendation to make the final payment on the project.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. 30, 2023, consider authorization for the township engineer to place the 2023 pavement maintenance project out for a bid. Have a motion?
So moved.
All second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. 31, 2023, consider approval of settlement agreement released and stormwater addendum in the Durbin matter. Do I have a motion? All second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Obstain.
Four and one abstention. 32, 2023, consider advertising for bids for the Stormwater Relocation Project for Windcrest Drive. All second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Obstain.
Four and one abstention. 33, 2023, consider authorizing Gateway Engineers to survey and prepare preliminary drawings for Coomer Road and Walnut Street Bridge.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. 34, 2023, consider setting a public hearing date of Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. for the Cool Valley Development Project. This was at the request of the applicant. Do I have a motion?
So make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That hearing will be February 15th at 7:00 p.m. 35, 2023, consider the general voting proxy for the Washington County Tax Collection Committee. Anybody want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second? Yeah, go ahead. You want to explain it?
When the... When the state of... When the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed down the ruling that EIT taxes would be collected by the county, they put the counties in charge. The counties were to develop committees, taxation committees. Since that program is working so well as far as the collection, a lot of communities are not participating in actively going to the committee meetings and voting. What this resolution is, it's being passed out to all Washington County municipalities. It would allow us to vote by proxy so that we wouldn't have to attend in person so that we meet those obligations under that taxing law passed by the Commonwealth.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. 36, 2023, consider hiring Kevin T. Wolford as Cecil Township Part-Time Fireman at an hourly rate of $17. I would also want to add to that his effective date would be starting immediately.
I have a question in regard to the hiring of Kevin Wolford. Did we only get one application?
No.
How many are we gonna hire?
We are gonna hire more. And I apologize, Chief McMullin is at a training this evening, so he couldn't be here. It's my understanding that he wants to start gradually and so he intends to start with one and then add more and then add more.
Okay, so when does he start to take the position?
Immediately, as soon as he can.
Okay, now, he's not gonna be able... What's he gonna do? Just what fire department, I guess, is what I want to know.
Muse. He'll be stationed at Muse.
Okay, so if he's the only one there...
He's not the only one there because we have duty shift programs. So, there's actually, in particular, one fireman that's there quite often. But there's duty shift guys that are there regularly that he will work with, plus the volunteers who are there when they can be.
Was he previously a volunteer for Muse?
He's a Peters Township fireman now.
He's... I know... I don't know if he's previous...
He's a Peters Township?
He's a full-time fireman in Peters Township. I don't know if he was previously a volunteer in Muse, but he is a professional full-time fireman currently. I'm sorry? Thank you. He's... Thank you. He was a volunteering... Thank you. For those that didn't hear or those that are online, he was at Hill Station and he's a township resident that lives... We won't give his home address. We'll just say he lives in the township.
So, he's more than qualified?
Yes.
According to what?
Yes.
The chief's report was?
Yes.
Or is?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're all...
Make a motion.
All second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five, zero. 37... You want to stand up and give him a round of applause? Hey, it's a snail's pace, but we got there. 37, 2023, consider the purchase of one Diesel Laptop and Software Program for the Public Works Department at a cost of $12,100. Do I have a mo... Phil, do you want to talk about it? Or wait, do you have any questions?
This is a diagnostic program that we utilize on our heavy trucks. Instead of sending them out to the local shops, we're getting hammered right now with diagnostic costs. And we're better... We'd be better able to do this in-house. It's tough for us to send it out to a shop, have them do a diagnostic and then pull the truck back, say, wow, we'll do the work. The next time you go there, they're gonna hammer you on the pricing. So, we've had some very pricey repair bills over the past four months. And so, this will enable us to do the diagnostic work in the shop and also possibly do the repairs in shop.
That's great.
And save a ton of money.
That's great.
Is there training gonna be done on it?
Yes. As a matter of fact, right now, there's a special going on with Diesel Laptop. If we do the purchase in February, there's five free training sessions involved. So, at a value of about $500. And we'll take advantage of that also.
Make a motion.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. 38, 2023, consider donating $5,000 for the Muse Fourth of July Fireworks Display facilitated by Joe Portodi. I don't even know how to spell that.
Correct, right.
Sorry. Was there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. 39, 2023, consider the 2023 reorganization minutes of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors from Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. 40, 2023, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, January 3rd, 2022, regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five, zero. 41, 2023, consider the general fund invoices from January 1st through January 31st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Now, I'm gonna open up for citizens' general comments and questions. So, the gentleman that had the question about the cell phone tower, do you want to come back up and ask us again? Sorry.
Sorry for that.
No, you're fine.
Jay Lewis, 201 County Line Road. I just want to make you guys aware that elevated properties applied for a permit in South Fayette. You know, to put the same cell tower up. It's actually gonna be on the same partial, but in South Fayette. Just make you guys aware. And, you know, didn't know if there was any update on our end of it.
So, we are aware. There's actually a hearing in South Fayette on February 22nd. We are exploring our options. Gretchen, our solicitor is aware of it. She's looking into some options. I think the intent at this point is for myself and Gretchen, if the board is willing or whomever, to at least go to the board meeting and voice our concerns. But we are exploring a lot of different options to make sure that we let them know how we...
I spoke with several people in South Fayette. Unfortunately, one thing, they don't have no ordinance how far it can be from a house. The only ordinance is 200 feet from a property line. But they're asking for four ordinances to be changed. So, it didn't look very good for them.
So, I mean, what I see right now is when we were here in Cecil over the last summer, it was going to the left of Jerry's house. Now, they're putting it to the right of Jerry's house, but in South Fayette. You know, they have to drive through our residential area, you know, through... You know, I don't know. I think it's interesting and for them to come back and do this. Shame on them.
I do know from past history, they have had that denied in South Fayette. So, just know that this board intends to do whatever we can to protect the residents. We are obviously limited by law, but that's why we have Gretchen, who's gonna look into our options and give us our options and let us know what we can do.
Great, thank you guys.
What happened though over in South Fayette, they met one of the conditions. They couldn't meet the others three. And they didn't pursue... They tried a lawsuit, but then they dropped it and now they're back across from your house.
Hey, thank you guys.
Thank you. Sorry. You can come up.
My name is Ben Chinskey. I live on 218 County Line Road. So, I was just curious. So, Cecil Township has an ordinance with a cell tower. For how many feet it could be from a residential area? If they put it on the South Fayette line and it's approaching on the Cecil Township area within that variance to my house, is that gonna be applicable?
No, because unfortunately, the tower itself is in South Fayette Township, not in Cecil Township. So, that's why we're exploring our options to see what we can do. Mr. Flair is right. They have some hurdles to jump in South Fayette too. It's not... It's not a slam dunk for them over there.
Okay.
And we do intend to let South Fayette know, you know, our feelings about it, especially considering how close it is to Cecil Township. It's actually closer to Cecil Township than it is real... I mean, it's in South Fayette, but it's really right on the South Fayette/Cecil Township border, so.
Well, I thought it was kind of like a done deal.
Yeah, we kind of did too, quite honestly. But they're not... For whatever reason, they're not letting it go. I mean, fingers crossed, hopefully, South Fayette denies them too. And then their only options at that point would be through the legal, through the court system.
Okay.
But we'll keep you updated. We're aware of it. We're trying to figure it out and hopefully.
Okay, just so you know, we're counting on you.
The two issues we're looking at...
No pressure, right?
Their ordinance does say that if it's within two... I mean, if it's butts a residential zone, it says any residential zone, it has to be 200 feet from the property line.
Okay.
And we're solicitor... And we're, our solicitor's working with us to see if, uh, they'll apply the, any residential zone to, you know, to your property, because it's, it's, it's with, within, um, that, that area that impacts their ordinance. But whether they're going to say, all right, that any zone only applies to South Fayette, we don't know yet. So we're working, shall be working with that, them on that. And the other thing is access. You can't access a commercial business through a residential zone, and I think from my understanding is that's their intent, and she will be addressing that, uh, with them also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other?
Kara Sheran fifty-eight North the Poly. Just quick. I have a quick, I guess, question slash request. So we were talking in the past about updating the oil and gas ordinance, and I did see that Jack put two updates on to the two pending well pads in Cecil. So one of the requests that I would have or questions I would have is, shouldn't we be taking a look at updating the ordinance with some of the protections that we've been asking them to put in on a one-off manner? And getting it part of the ordinance so we don't constantly have to go back and negotiate on those points. So things like emergency response, um, sound monitoring, other, anything related to the expiration of the conditional use. I think it's probably worth it at a minimum to make sure that we update the ordinance with those, those protections. Um, so that's, does it any, is there any update on us doing that at any time?
Can't change it, no.
Well, we can't change the- We can't change-
We can't change it for the existing ones, but seeing that, like, everything was kind of slow for a while, and it's ramping up, and it seems like they're, they're moving on things again. It's possible we get more applications coming in the near future. This is probably the right time, in my opinion, um, to, to go out and make those, those modifications to, so when the subsequent applications come through, we don't have to negotiate those points that maybe they even agree on, right? Like, it'll just be part of the ordinance and they'll just have to do it automatically.
A lot of the conditions that were on both pads were agreed upon between the township and range, so I don't see an issue with updating, but it's, it's a process, as you know.
Understood.
So we could schedule a meeting. Maybe I can add it to our March agenda to consider scheduling a meeting.
We pretty much, Tommy and I met with them and they pretty much agreed with everything.
But, but still, if the ordinance is updated to reflect those things, then it's not, doesn't become a negotiation, it becomes a condition.
And they just do it, and it, then we don't have to have additional meetings and all that other kind of stuff, too.
Right, and we can, yeah, we can, I'm sorry. Yeah, it- Yeah, and we can include them. I mean, they've been great to work with, especially, um, Laurel. So we can include them in that process, let them know that we're considering it and move forward.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, one other ordinance that I think could be looked at at least, and I'd be willing to share some information research that I've done, as well as the noise ordinance, um, doesn't appear to be very defensible or, um, have really any way for us to take any action on it. Um, I'd be willing to share some of the information research I've done on that, if that would be something that the board would consider. Um, it seems that, uh, that's not top much that we can do with that one in addition.
Um, sorry, we were just talking. You're right. I mean, not related necessarily to well pads, but in general, overall, our noise ordinance needs to be updated. Um, we've had complaints about construction. We've had complaints about, um, with people being out. So like, we need, we need to make that change. So why don't I do this? If the board's okay with it on the March agenda, um, we, if you have an ordinance that you think needs to be updated or addressed, let Dawn know, um, and we can add it to the March agenda, and then we can kind of start scheduling hearings. We do need to update our ordinances. We can't just ignore them. So if there's any other ones besides-
And we could consider start some hearings for the zoning.
Yep.
If we're making zoning changes based on a corporate supply.
Yep.
Then we can get all those in March to list them.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so just let Dawn know if there's things that you want thrown on the agenda related to updates, and we can kind of start that process moving forward.
And if everyone's open, I can send Dawn some of the opinions that I got on the, uh, defensibility of our noise ordinance, which-
So I wouldn't, I mean, you can send them to Dawn, but if you want them to be included in the record, I would bring them-
Bring them to the meeting.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Winter, and I live at three, three, eight, four Millers Run Road. My concerns are, I've had an ongoing problem with a neighbor for the past two years. I've contacted the police, and there's been, they show up. I've had urine, I've had feces pour on my property, and it's still going on to this day. Um, we've contacted mental health, protective services, everybody has come. The last time we called the police, they drove by, didn't stop. Nothing's been done. I had, uh, pictures, I have videos, I have everything there is to put this person, or whatever you want to do with them. She stands on Route fifty, blocking traffic. You name it, she's done it. She's hit my wife with an umbrella. She's throwing things at the house. She's called the house, she's harassed people, you name it. She's hit the neighbor's dog with papers. And to no avail, we're still fighting this problem with no solution. I'm not sure if the chief can do anything or not, but we're stuck. We're, we're a tax-paying resident. We pay our taxes, we do everything we're supposed to, and there's nothing done. And it's frustrating that I have to live like this every day of my life, and someone's putting shit all over my house. I have videos of, of urine being poured in my backyard. I have a dog who can't go in the backyard because there's human feces in the backyard.
So, and I'm going to give Sean the opportunity to talk, but just so you understand, while, while we feel for you, there's really nothing that we as a Board of Supervisors can do.
Basically, I'm, I'm stuck.
Well, no, the, and I don't want to speak out of turn, Sean, I'll give you the opportunity, but it sounds like a criminal matter or a civil matter between, there's, I just don't want to give you false hope that there's something that this board here could do related to that matter. So hang on.
At least we have to determine whether it's a, um, police matter or even a enforcement matter, too. It, it could be a combination of both. And I think Sean can kind of steer us on what things he thinks might be related to.
Address again?
Three, three, eight, four. This is also a zoning problem, too.
Three, three, eight, four Millers Run Road?
Yes. No, immediately, it's a five forty Coleman Road. I want to know from the whole board here, what is your definition of a fence?
Of a fence?
Of a fence. The by, the person I'm dealing with has a string and sawhorses as a fence. Now, when I contacted the person up here for a fence, I was told a fence has to be a structure that's put in the ground.
Yes.
What I ha- what she has is a string.
Have you talked to our code enforcement officer?
I've talked to everybody here. All I get is, well, it's just, it's, it's Ms. Poppage. It's just your problem. You deal with it. So how am I supposed to deal with it when nobody here will help me?
Okay.
I'm stuck.
Yeah, I, we get, I mean, I don't want to call you out, but like, we get a copy of the reports that come in from our code enforcement officer, and I don't recall seeing that on there. I'm not saying it wasn't, but I don't recall. So give us the opportunity to talk to our code enforcement officer. We'll find out, um, we'll find out. And then if you could just leave your name and information with Dawn or Carol, we will be back in touch with you related to that. But I, again, you know, the fence issue, that's a, that's an enforcement matter.
And she has the, uh, problem with the grass. We've contacted John Tater, our neighbor, who has a funeral home, has contacted for the grass. The grass goes from nothing all the way to four or five feet tall. So then all of a sudden, the grass gets cut, then it grows again. So there's not, this is a, this is a, a nuisance, but there's nothing done.
Right, again.
And as she has mental problems, we've, I've contacted her, her cousin in Wyoming. And there's nothing.
If I like to add, we are doing what we can. It's frustrating that the police too. I'm sure you're aware of, there was arrest made. Mental health has been called. There's not much we can do. Whenever you do have a problem, you have to call nine-one. All the officers will handle it as best as they can at that time, and that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, law enforcement cannot just pull you out of the house. There's a process, and again, we have her in that process, but unfortunately, it's, it's very frustrating, particularly this incident.
And then the problem was, is I was a laughingstock at a police department when there was poop on my, on my house. It's not like it's, like it's a little bit. It's like someone took a hole, just, just threw it.
I, I don't think our police officers were laughing at you related to that.
Uh, it was a, it was basically when I came back the second time after it, he's like, boy, you're, we, everybody heard about you and laughing about it. Not laughing, being malicious, but in a way of saying, boy, you're you're the ass of a township, basically. Everybody knows about it and talks about it.
Hold, hold on, hold on, hold on. I just ask because it is, I, I hear you, and again, if you want to say something, I'm happy to have you. We're just live streaming, so I want everybody to be able to hear. I wish, like, we are limited by laws and ordinances.
I know, I understand that, but the person needs, mental health shows up. They showed up, and I said, well, we can't do anything to help you because she won't listen in the house. Protective services shows up.
I can't-
As difficult as it is, you have to call nine-one, get on record. We will show up. We have body cameras. I review body cameras all the time. These officers do not think it's funny. We're trying our best to help her.
I understand, and I'm, I've offered-
Believe me when I tell you this, we cannot just walk in someone's house without a warrant. We are trying everything we can through the county. The county, like you said, the county's aware of it, mental health's aware of it. Um, I, I can't go into details because again, it's a person's private life. Um, but the township, the county is doing their best to handle this. I, I see that, uh, there's neighbors here. They've came down to our station. We are concerned for her safety, but again, we can only do so much when it comes to law enforcement. If you do a criminal activity, and again, if you have an issue of her damaging your property, throwing feces on your property, call us, we will handle it and we will cite her. But unfortunately, those are summary violations, and we just don't put somebody in.
Don't think you're being a pain either. I know I tell us to a lot of people, they're like, oh, I don't want to bother nine-one-one. Call for everything. You're not bothering us, but it'll give you a record of documentation to.
And it gives mental health.
More of a case, but the, the one officer told us there were seven warrants for her arrest.
Those are daylight magistrate warrants.
But the one time-
And absolutely, as soon as she gets out of the house.
But the, the one instance, the police officer had her cornered on Coleman Road, and he let her go. I mean, you had her right there to take her and get her help.
I, I don't, again, call nine-one. I am aware of this. I will go over the officers. Again, they're doing the best they can legally without putting a township or themselves in liability with this.
And one question I, maybe for you, if Ms. Poppage was in the middle of Route fifty and was struck by a vehicle as she stops traffic, who would be held liable? Would the person driving the vehicle?
We can't answer what-if question. So let me say this again, let me reiterate this again. Please leave your name and information. We will ta- we will look at the enforcement side of it and what we can do from that. Um, and again, just call nine-one-one every single time, no matter what, even if it's the littlest thing, call nine-one-one for documentation, and we will do what we can within the bounds of the law, but we can't violate the law, from a police perspective, from a township perspective, or from a county perspective.
I was, I was calling this, well, we tried to, it's been going on for, for twelve years, actually. It's been going on for twelve years.
I have a ton of sympathy, and believe me, like, I'm sure this board feels the same way. There's, if we could do something, we would. It's not like we're sitting here with the ability to do something and we're refusing to. We can't. So just don't think you're being a pain. Call nine-one-one and, and get that, all that information on record so that if you do need to take civil action, you could, or if county mental health needs it, they have the proof of every single time that it's been done, because Chief Buck, Buckavinsky can get them that information. Our police will document it, and please, I know our guys, they're great guys. They're not laughing at you.
They're all great guys. It's just-
They're not laughing at you. I promise you they're not.
That's the situation, that it was presented.
I, I don't think they think it's funny. Yeah.
I'm aware of this situation. We're not laughing about it.
Yeah, it's not funny to anyone.
Handle this and let the agencies that can do something for her do it.
Okay. I just want her to get help, because I don't want-
We do too.
Yeah, this is ridiculous, where, where it's at now.
So just get that documentation. So, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to, um, go into a brief executive session before we adjourn this meeting.
Cindy, can I do something before we go into an executive session?
Yes, sorry, darling.
Uh, I want to pa- pass out these, uh, I want the supervisors to have a copy of this report that was published about the air quantity monitoring at the Augustine well pad. The monitoring covers July twenty nineteen to December twenty twenty-first. The residents need to know that the well site did not contribute it, did not contribute to ve- a, eval- elevated increases in potential health concerns. I would appreciate it if this study link is put on the township website for the residents to view. And I have the website.
Darling, where did this come from?
Pardon me?
Where did this come from?
From Range Resources.
Okay.
And the, and the study.
In what? I'm sorry.
The study. It's, it's, it's on, it's online.
Okay. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at. Okay, why don't you give us the opportunity to review this? And if everybody, because I obviously can't read it right here.
Sure, it's either right there, it's Augustine Ra- Range Resources, Augustine well, Augustine well pad, Cecil Township.
Yeah, I see all that.
This was the air monitor that was taking place for two years, and it's come back that
I understand.
It did not contribute to any increases in potential health concerns.
I understand. So I just want to give the board the opportunity before we're saying yes or no to posting something, to read it. Um, I would also ask, because we have the same courtesy with you, in the future, this is obviously something that could have been emailed to us. If you would have emailed it to us in advance of the meeting, we could have had the opportunity to review it and could have given you a decision tonight, but I don't want to say yes or no until I have the opportunity to read it.
Next time I'll, next time I'll email. I'll make sure.
Yeah, that's all.
Because this came in short notice.
Yeah, that's no problem. And board members, if you're okay with it being added, um, just let Dawn know, after you've had the opportunity to read it.
In other words, on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, because there's a link there, and it, it's, it's public knowledge.
Right, I understand that, but again, like, you just presented this to us, and it's three full pages, so I want the opportunity to read it and understand the facts before we're saying yes, put it out to the public. So, okay, executive session.
Cindy, is there any likelihood that we will have to act on anything when we come back? Well, you got to tell them that, that we, there won't be any a- action.